Alright, I bring the order of the city council meeting dated twelve thirty nineteen eighty-five during this council meeting session. On my order. Um, first things first, let's see, we have a seat to fill, uh, let me look at the results here. Alright, so for the open seat in the city council meeting, the council has voted. Um, unanimous vote goes to Chaz Riverfox. Is Chaz Riverfox in the, uh, audience right now? Not even here. Alright, well, the council voted on him. We'll wait for the end of the meeting. If he's not here, the council will figure out what we're gonna do with the, the seat. But, uh, the special election within the council, Chancellor Fox has won. Uh, moving forward, um, there's a, uh, there's an election coming up, the mayor's elections, so this is the last city council meeting that I know for sure that I'll be in, so, um, I've been told to give a state of the state address, so just kinda give it up or down, like, talk about what we've completed as a city council, uh, since I've been in office. So, um, state of the state would be as, as, I've taken the city council, um, from not meeting at all, actually, and only one, one law being passed to over a dozen laws being passed by the city council. Um, since taking office, we've instituted, uh, language in the constitution to support the college, um, and do a, uh, bill for the college. Uh, during my reign, eh, my reign, during my time as mayor. (laugh) Your reign. Uh, during my time as mayor, we've, uh, we've, uh, instituted, uh, the DMV, which is currently taking, um, registrations, so, um, and that was taken from PD. Uh, we have a working, um, not only have we worked on a working institution, uh, we've all passed in the law, the Accessibility Act, which, which allow wheelchairs up, um, to the, oh, excuse me, snake in my boot, um, all city hall, uh, buildings. Um, we've also, uh, gone from no input from the city to, uh, taking in consideration not only the city's decisions and input into writing those into laws. Um, those laws have been passed in city council. Um, I'm just gonna be honest with you guys, alright? Alright, four months have gone by pretty quick, I would say. When I first came here, I started off as a, uh, a paralegal, worked my way up as a lawyer. Became the director of this bureau that is the biggest bureau, I say the bus- the busiest bureau in the DOJ right now. The Business and Revenue Bureau. Established that, and to watch that grow over the past four months. We now talk about that institution every city council meeting, and that is something that I helped create, and it has been insane to watch that department grow. Um, while working in the, uh, city, city hall and becoming mayor, watching the city grow and city council grow, and to have people that wanna be interested in even talking about what this, what is good for the city, and what we need as a city, what we wanna achieve as a city, has been amazing to see. Before I was mayor, there was no one in these seats. No one in these city council seats, and no one even wanted to be here. Now, every week, every week, we sit here and we say it's gonna be a slow week, we think. And then as it turns out, tons of people show up and give us tons of opinions. Now, I can try to list off all the accomplishments that I've done, all the laws that I've been passed while, while I've been in office. But the true testament about what I've done and what city council has been able to do is sitting right next to you guys right now. The mere fact that you guys are even here listening to me talk, the mere fact that we're gonna listen to everyone speak, and we're gonna introduce laws, and those laws are gonna get passed, is all a testament about what I've done here in office. So, I don't wanna go through a longer list of things that I've done, when I could just look out and see and everyone that's here, and this meeting that's about to happen. So, I, I don't wanna hold everything up. It's been an honor, it has truly been an honor to serve the city, and if the city so chooses to go on with someone else, then, then I back the city. It's like I always have. I don't think it'd be a good choice, I think giving me in office is the best choice you can choose. You just look around at what I've already achieved, you can see, this city is moving forward every step with me at the reins.
Alright guys.
So, I, I'll, I'll leave it at that, we'll go ahead and move on with the meeting, um, but it's been
Woo, Superman reeks!
To serve you guys. Um, and I, I hope they get to serve you some more. For another four months, but that's gonna be up to you guys. But it has been my pleasure. So, mov- moving on, moving on.
Alright.
So, we'll go ahead and go from, uh, left to right on, uh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that's right, it's the pledge of allegiance, uh, Boblin, you wanna lead us?
Uh, no.
Yeah, that doesn't matter, we gotta do it anyway.
This is, this is awkward. Um, yeah, Falco, you wanna lead?
Hello.
Sure. I pledge allegiance. Oh, oh, here we go.
To the flag!
To the flag. Of the United States of America.
Which stands? One nation, under God, indivi- individual, and liberty, justice, for all.
Thumbs up for America.
This is bad, this is bad.
Do you know the pledge?
(laugh)
I can see it. Alright. I'm moving on, thank you everyone.
Perhaps you weren't listening.
Alright, Alistair, you have, uh, wanna address the council?
Ah, crap, son of a bitch, sorry.
Uh, name's Alistair Humphries, uh, at this time I have no bills to propose or discussions to start at this time.
I'm having a headache.
Thanks, Alistair.
Son of a, that's better.
I'm Dr. Cat, um, I have nothing to propose or nothing to discuss at this time, I hope you all had a happy holidays, and looking forward to the next year. That's it.
Alright, thank you.
Hey, Riff.
Yes, and happy holidays.
Is she the one I threatened, or is that another lady?
Oh my god, don't say that in here! Don't threaten them!
Hello, council, I'm Jason Winters. Uh, I don't have any bills to present. Uh, I do wanna say officially that I endorse, uh, Chase Reeves for reelection for mayor. Uh, because of Mayor Chase, he's the reason why I ran for city council. Um, he's somebody who has become a close friend, as well as a confidant, and a mentor to me in the ways of law, and how we govern our city. Um, if it wasn't for Chase, um, I would've left the city about two months ago, when I was at my lowest point in my life. Um, you know, he came to me, he gave me assurances, um, you know, we've, we became very close over the, over the last couple of months. Um, he is somebody that I believe in, and I feel like he is somebody that actually cares, like truly cares about every single person in this room, as well as every single person in the city. So, that's what I wa- that's all I wanna say, thank you.
Thank you, Jason, thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason Winters.
Thank you, buddy.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, bubbly.
People of Los Santos, council members and current mayor, I come to you today with literally nothing to present, other than my aptitude for enjoyment of this council that we and my friend here Chase has cultivated. Together, we as the council have tried to city a better place, and I hope that each and every one of you sitting here today in the council chambers know that we not only care about you as civilians, but we care about you as the infrastructure of the city that you are. I would like to follow suit with Jason Winters and fulfill three Christmas wishes that I have necessarily needing to fulfill, even though it is slightly My first Christmas wish I am fulfilling is by throwing my support behind the current mayor in his reelection. I don't know that much about him, but I know that he orders food from Burger Shot Burger a lot, which is what Jason, who just gave him an amazing speech about owns, and they are closely related to each other in friendship and business. And I know that the current mayor is a wonderful individual who has always allowed me to present as much as I can to try and make this city a better place, and has never put me down in any of my facets or machinations, and he even lets me call him Snookums. And a man who allows me to call him Snookums in a council meeting like this is an individual that deserves the love and respect of the populace that he represents. I shall now fulfill my second Christmas wish. I am throwing my support for mayor behind Oswin, who wished for me to also support him in the race for being mayor. I literally know nothing about him, and the only thing I've been told about Oswin is that he's a dangerous man. But perhaps danger is what this city needs.
I'm right. We're who for danger.
And by danger, I mean, he's the man that's gonna put some excitement in this city. He's the man that's gonna make this city burn like a couple of coals in the embers of the almighty ever rain forests and the burning wildlife of California.
Okay, what about the drones?
That's very wish, that, the third wish is that I have to throw my support behind that woman back there, whose name is, uh, Julie and Jamie. She is running for mayor, and she is Scottish, and with her rule, a woman will finally be in power in this city and be able to give this city of Los Santos the feminist touch that it needs and deserves.
Hell yeah!
Hell yeah, women, woo, we love 'em.
I think Boblin should be mayor.
Thank you, thank you civilians, and I hope that all of you had a happy holidays and a good new year.
You too, Boblin. You too, Boblin.
Thank you, Boblin!
Thank you, Boblin! He truly is.
That was impressive.
Beautiful.
Pill, uh, pillar of the community.
He's an American hero to the people, I'll tell you what.
I never got one.
My name is Billy Falco, I, I am a councilman. Uh, I do have a bill to present today, it's, it's very simple and straight, and straightforward. Uh, you, you'll find it in council chambers, as well as in, in the awaiting legislation filing cabinet. The bill, the purpose of the bill is to declare intersections with non-functioning traffic lights as uncontrolled intersection. This is already a de facto law, um, a- as well as in place in all fifty states outside of San Andreas. Um, it, it me- it merely, that's the whole bill, it declares that an intersection with a traffic light that isn't working as it, you know, as a normal traffic light should, is an uncontrolled intersection. That, that's the entire bill. Um, and, uh, uh, and I, I opened, I opened it up for questions.
You're not supposed to go down the middle easy.
Oh shit, sorry, look.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm just reading.
Did everybody get any nice presents for Christmas?
I got a belt.
I gotta fight you.
He got a necklace.
I got a rock.
Was it coal?
What kinda rock?
Nah, nevermind, it's a
It was, it was
It's a joke, from a commercial.
Is it crack?
Oh, was it a pet rock?
No.
Those things are sick.
They are really cool.
I love pet rocks.
Oh, okay, alright, we're back.
And then they big giggly eyes.
We continue this discussion, we just wanna seat the, uh, new council member.
Oh, okay.
No. So, uh, Chaz Riverfox? Yeah, you have, uh,
I think that is the guy that gave you ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, you have won the special election for the seat. So, the seat is yours.
Nina, Falco.
Now, you're on city council now.
That, that has to do with the business bureau, this is about city council. So, you put your name in the hat for a special election, you won the special election, and the, and the seat is yours.
Woo!
Eh, congratulations!
Woo! Congrats.
Cause we're in the middle of, um, looking at a bill and deciding if we're gonna vote on it. So, can someone hand him the, the, the bill? Alright, does the, uh, the council members, we'll give you a second, actually, while you read it, we'll give the, the, let the people get, get kind of a, the question.
If anybody has questions.
Um, turn the questions over to the people, anyone have any questions about the Traffic Control Clarification Act of nineteen eighty-five? Please come to the podium, and, uh, ask your questions to the council members.
Uh, hi, I'm Jaffa Listerine, um, I'm not very well versed in traffic laws, what does it mean to be an uncontrolled intersection? Do I just get to drive through it?
No, it, you still have to follow, you know, the traffic laws in, in accordance with, you know, with, uh, Traffic Control Act under the const- uh, under the constitution, but, and I may have just gave it the wrong name, but everybody knows what I'm, which one I'm talking about, but it just means that there's something that people can point to, uh, in addressing, in, in unclear situations.
Okay, so I treat it like there's no lights?
Right.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, public questions?
Where did the, oh, go ahead, sorry, go ahead, man.
Yeah, all good, uh, Neil Sinclair, so, this, I actually really appreciate Mr. Falco bringing up, I know we discussed this, uh, briefly earlier before the council meeting. My question is, will this actually go anywhere? Because I know the Stop and Go Traffic Act of nineteen eighty-five is currently stalled within the DOJ, and nothing has come of that yet, to mine or anybody else's knowledge. So, I'm wondering if anything will actually happen with the Uncontrolled Inter- Intersection Act, or if the city has any intention at all of actually pushing forward any, any form of traffic acts or amendments to, uh, laws on the city streets.
I believe that, that this act is specific enough, and also in line with the rest of the country. So, it is, it is very likely to pass judicial review and federal approval.
Okay, let's hope so, thank you.
Okay, does anybody from the ca- anybody else have questions, or anybody from the council have questions?
Uh, I just, I just have one thing that I, I wanna get some clarification on, that I believe, uh, this could also clear up some things for the people. Uh, uh, for, for this act in particular, what, what falls under the definition of a malfunctioning traffic light? Uh, could this just be, does this just talk about traffic lights that, you know, the, the screws come undone and they just fall over, or does this also, like, include traffic lights that are taking unusually long to change their color?
It, it is def- defined as a traffic light that is not operating as a normal traffic light should.
Well, what's the should?
Yes, what, 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 what should a normal traffic light do?
To control the regular flow of traffic.
Ra- rather, who decides what the should is?
Well, control the regular flow of traffic.
What's the regular flow of traffic need?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that, this doesn't answer the question.
So, when we get pulled over, what exactly are we, uh, looking for?
Well, yeah, I just mean, yeah.
All it's, all this does is provide a clarification. All it's, yeah.
But, 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 but it's, it's not clarified, you know, to, to the clearest extent that it could. And that's why I'm bringing up this question.
So, it'll be a reasonable person standard.
Should we add a couple of bullet points that gives examples, that way, uh, if a police officer does pull you over, you can cite that law?
Can you have an example of a reasonable person in this room that we could use as a baseline?
Well, the reasonable person standard is like, is sort of a legal doctrine.
Okay.
Well, it is a legal doctrine, not sort of, um.
Is it, or is it sort of a legal doctrine?
It is, absolutely.
Is definitely a legal doctrine.
Okay, thank you, please use more careful rhetoric, sir.
Of course.
For the, the line, section one, uh, paragraph A, a traffic control signal that fails to operate as intended, that's the question, that's, so, what is to say what intended is? Can we, can we just have a bullet point or something that says?
Yeah, normal, normal functions of, normal function of a traffic light anywhere in the world.
What is normal to you?
Okay, you, you need, w- we're basically, you know, trying to say that you need to specify precisely what a normal traffic light should be doing, uh, and if it does not do this, and it falls under this act.
Green, yellow, right.
Like, have like bullet points that if the traffic light stays longer for more than twenty seconds, it is deemed unworkable, or thirty seconds, what would you consider?
I would even go so far as to say
Yeah, we, we don't wanna be that specific.
Intended by the guidance, by the guidelines given by whatever the Department of Transportation.
No, no, no. We, we don't, the goal is to en- enable citizens to know what doctrine to point to, when they're deciding whether they can go or not. And when somebody pulls up to an intersection, and all the traffic lights are red in all four directions, they know that that means it's a malfunction, and in that case, they treat it as an uncontrolled intersection, and it becomes a four-way stop.
Okay, can you write that in there, then? That's a good clarification of
If we write that in, the chances of this passing, the judicial review, and the federal government review go down exponentially.
So, we leave it entirely unclear.
No, the goal is to be, be, to just, to just address this specific point.
Also, uh, for, uh, red lights at intersection is to say that pedestrians are crossing? So, are we writing into this that pedestrians don't have to cross, there's no jaywalking?
Well, I, it's, it's the same thing, it's a, a, uh, you treat it as a four-way stop. That's, that's how the California Driver's Ed book of nineteen eighty-five states, uh, states what you should do.
That is correct.
Yep.
Done the research.
I'm Californian.
Just speak, Chaz, just speak, Chaz, just say something.
I don't have to raise my hand?
No, just talk.
So, what if it's not a stoplight?
Well, then, I mean, there's only really, so this really addresses, this is declaring malfunctioning stoplights. If you're in an intersection where a- a- all the tr- all the stop signs got knocked down, then that's also an uncontrolled intersection, but that's not what we're addressing here.
Why not?
Because we're specifically addressing traffic lights, which are a point of contention in the city.
Oh, okay.
Okay, it is no secret that this city has a very bad problem with, uh, you know, streetlights and traffic control lights consistently falling over whenever you're driving through the streets. They will fall over by themselves, and then there'll be intersections that are missing their traffic lights. Okay, so, th- this is talking about intersections that may be missing their traffic lights, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Or, that if the traffic lights are not functioning as they should.
Okay, and that's, that's where you're losing me and several other people.
Well, if, if it's red, if it's red, if it's red in all four directions.
If it's red in all four
I hate that!
Brought up a very good point, Mr. Braithwaite over there said a four-way, you know, red lights means pedestrians are crossing at one of the streets, so.
Again, you just treat it like a stop sign. Treat it like a four-way stop, like any other inter- I mean, again, the driver's license ha- I mean, the, the Driver's Ed handbook for California for nineteen eighty-five states, this is exactly what you're supposed to do. If it barks like a dog, or quacks like a duck, then it, it, then that's how a, a traffic light functions.
Okay, so then you need to make a bullet point in, in this act on how the dogs should bark, then. Uh, because you, you need to put a bullet point on how the, the traffic lights should be, and if they're not performing in this, you know, desired manner, the way that they should be, uh, then that's when this act comes into play.
I understand your point, and I don't disagree with it, however, again, we need to keep the bill very high level in order to get judicial and federal support.
Okay, I, I understand that, but we can't just leave some things ambiguous and blur some gray lines here in hopes of getting it passed.
We can add, uh, uh, to a reasonable person standard.
Yeah, we could do that, instead of the aligning it with the guidelines or requirements of some other
Yeah, we can add to a reasonable person standard. If a reasonable person would believe that the traffic light is not functioning properly, then it's considered an uncontrolled intersection, and that
Be up to the judge, or the
Yes.
Whatever case, traffic law case comes to forth. So, that's fine, I, I'm alright with that change, that would take care of the ambiguity.
Just so long as there's a, a clear outline on, you know, how the light should be acting, and then this is what you can do if they're not acting as intended, then
Well, no, no, again, we're, we're not, we're not stating what should be done, other than the fact that just, it just declares the situation an uncontrolled intersection, and then they have to follow all the traffic laws that, that go along with it. This bill does not say what you're supposed to do in an uncontrolled intersection, it just says, ta-da, you're in an, uh, capoof, you're an uncontrolled intersection.
Okay.
Alright, um, now we had a little bit of back and forth, so I'm gonna reopen this up to the people, and then reopen it to the council, and then we'll, we'll set forth and vote for this. So, uh, people have any questions, or?
Love the jacket.
Uh, thanks. Um, as a, what I consider to be a reasonable person, I am, um, just as part of the clarification, I feel like stopping for like three seconds at one of these intersections is reasonable, but with how vague it sounds, let's just say like, uh, you know, a police officer pulls me over and says, "Well, you're supposed to stop for five seconds, that sounds reasonable to me." How do we know which is like the actual reasonable time?
Well, no, it, the, it, the reasonable person standard doesn't apply to the time, it applies to whether there's a belief that the traffic light is not functioning.
So, that's a different law I should look at?
Yes, so, you, you would follow the traffic code, so, so, most states, you're supposed to stop at a traffic, uh, at a stop sign for, I believe, for three seconds. So, you would follow, you would follow that law.
Right, okay.
Something I will say is that I tried to pass a similar bill that did go through, but then immediately got rejected by the Department of Justice and the federal government, and I think it was specifically because it wasn't vague enough. So, I think that that is what Mr. Falco's trying to do, to get this passed, to help civilians save time with faulty infrastructure in red lights that don't work properly. Yes.
Right.
This is designed to pass, the federal and judicial review.
Exactly, Mr. Falco is using his knowledge of judicial and federal review to formulate this, uh, bill in a way that they will be agreeable with.
Okay, got it.
Better chance, better chance that they'll be agreeable.
Right.
Yes.
Chaz? Chaz?
Best chance.
Could, could we just, like, use our horns to signal to other people that we're entering the intersection?
Sure, every cop would pull you over, and run
Yeah. I, I mean, again, that, like, ah, it doesn't really address, address it, I mean, you're welcome to.
Okay.
Well, do we have any more questions before we move on?
Yeah, do we have any more questions from the public?
Uh, I believe I hear Mr. Fitzgerald back here has a question.
I'm trying to get up there, but I can't.
Oh, no worries, you can, you can speak from there.
I, I'm just gonna shout from here, I'm just gonna shout from here, is that okay?
Yep.
Um, so, so, so the basis of this law is just, just from, like, from the conversation. It just says, if a stoplight doesn't work, i- if lights at an intersection don't work, you treat it like a four-way intersection, you just treat it like you normally would if there wasn't any lights there, or stop signs, if there were other cars There were stop signs, if there were other cars there, you do right of way and then you just let people go. That's all this is addressing, is lights at an intersection.
Essentially, yes. Although it's even more generic, cause it just says that when, you know, when the, when the lights aren't working right, it's considered an uncontrolled intersection. And then, and that's all the bill says. And then you need to, if, in an uncontrolled intersection, then you need to follow those rules for that.
You follow normal traffic laws for an uncontrolled intersection.
Yep. This is just to, to, it's done in a, in a semiambiguous way to pass judicial review, but it's to avoid ambiguity when you get pulled over for, I, I, you know, when, you know, it's okay, all the, the, the traffic lights are down. Or it's been red for, you know, ten seconds in all directions. And you go and you get pulled over and you, and you say, this is an uncontrolled intersection and, and as long as you treat it as a four-way stop, it's correct. It's already de facto law here. It's just not everybody knows about it.
All right. Any more questions, uh?
I'm gonna make sure we get that in transcript as well, that, that it's already de facto law.
Yeah. Did, did that answer your question?
I just clarification, that was all. The conversation going back and forth about the law, kind of like confused what the bill was actually about, so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, any more questions? We're moving to the council and then after vote. All right, uh, council members, any more questions?
Mm-mm.
Nope. All good.
All good here.
All right, so do we have enough, council, we have enough, uh, information on the bill to put forth a vote? Uh, show our hands, we'll, uh, get that and then if we get, uh, clearance on that, then we'll put a official vote in for the record.
I'm good to vote.
You're good to vote?
I'm good to vote.
Good to vote?
Good to vote.
Charlie Hall!
All right, four, we got the majority already. All right, so, all right, so, raise your hands, those are all in favor of passing the Traffic Control Clarification Act of nineteen eighty-five presented by Billy Falco. Please raise your hand. All right, let the record show, the, uh, the bill, the act, the Traffic Control Clarification Act of nineteen eighty-five has passed unanimously.
Hey, good job, Falco.
All right, good job.
Thank you. Uh, I do have one other point, however, I'm gonna wait until, uh, and, and come up as a, as a citizen to, to speak to it, uh, not as a council member.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, we're moving down the line, Chad, so why don't you go ahead and go up to the podium? Yeah, good job, Falco. Um, should go up to the podium and, and, I know you don't have any bills to present, which is really understandable. Um, so why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself to the council and the people and give them your soapbox and what you feel like you're gonna fight for during your, uh, term up here.
Okay.
Uh, on the other side, face, facing the council.
Other way, other way, Chad.
Uh, the microphone doesn't move? Okay.
Other, yeah, it doesn't work very well. There you go.
He's, he's very handsome.
Uh, Jason Winters.
Why just?
Reminds me of somebody. I'm just quite not. Can you go support him morally, Jason Winters?
No prob, no problem.
That is uncanny.
This is.
Amazing, that's just why I have.
I, I have mixed feelings about it.
Wait, I'm confused.
What, Jason, you wanna grind up?
They look the same.
It's a cult.
I thought the painkillers gained to me. Are you seeing two Jasons too?
Yeah, I'm seeing two Jasons.
Oh my gosh.
No, 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 no.
Let's just come right here. Oh, you look, you look great, bud.
You are rocking that haircut.
You look great, kiddo.
You look great, guy.
What's going on, Chad? Hey, buddy.
Are either of you adopted?
Welcome.
We could do a DNA test. I mean, that's, that's, we could do that.
Everyone in this city is adopted by someone.
Of course, of course, I would never.
All right, what do you have, hey, Chad? Hi, Chad.
I looked at the list of people who also put their names forward. Um, I don't know many of them, but like one of them's a fire captain, so he could have done a pretty good job. Um, and I know Cleo Wasserman, cause she works with me at Dynasty Eight, so I think she'd do a pretty good job. Um, and I think I also worked with Giuseppe, so I think they both done really good jobs. Um, I'm glad, uh, you know, I'm happy that I was selected out of a great bunch of people. Um, I mean, fire captain's pretty impressive, but you, um, I'm, I'm kinda focused on business and making sure that there's opportunities for all kinds, not just the standard ones where, um, that you see around the city. If people have an idea and the market is open to it, that should be encouraged and supported, um, expeditiously. So, um.
Right out.
Thank you for believing in me out of a great list of, a great group of people. And, um, yeah, I'm not changing my hair, cause I just got this done.
You look fabulous.
Well, you don't have to change. You look great.
You look amazing.
I'm sorry I'm like all dressed in like my work clothes. I was up at UTO when I got a fax saying I gotta come down here, so like, I was concerned that Mr. Braithwaite, um, you know, it needed like extra paperwork, cause that was a process.
No, it's understandable. Um, and look forward, look forward to seeing what kind of legislation you pass.
Thanks. Okay. I'll get a better sign next time.
No, no worries, no worries. Uh, last but not least.
Morning?
Yeah, there's, yeah, there, there it is.
Hi, everyone, this is Mike on. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
We're on this card, um, I have been away out of state on business last couple weeks, so I apologize. Shit, that didn't outbalance out. Um, I still have my two in- initial bills that I am working on ironing out, making sure that they are clean and, um, all, um, amendments are, are brought forward as previously discussed, so that we can make sure that we're all on the same page and we can move forward on the two other initiatives. Um, I don't have anything new to present to the board, to the council.
All right, glad you could make it today.
Uh, that is all, thank you.
All right.
All right, name's Mayor Chase Reeves, um.
Sorry, what was that? What was your name?
Mayor Chase Reeves, the first.
Can you get closer to the microphone, please?
Yeah, let me get a little, let me just, uh, scoot over a little bit. I, I, I do, I do. Do you wanna see it?
Yeah, can I see your ID, please?
Willing to submit to a DNA test.
Can you step up to the, to the, uh, table and show me your ID?
I mean, that takes at least.
Whip it out!
Uh, there you go.
All right, checks out. Thank you, sir.
Can you spell that for me, please?
C-A-C-H-A-S-E-R-E-E-V-E-S is what it was on his ID.
Uh, and now use it in a sentence?
Chase Reeves is currently the mayor of Los Santos?
Now use it in a libelous sentence?
Oh, okay.
What does that mean?
A spelling bee.
Okay. All right, what do you have to say, sir?
Uh, I have, uh, no legislation to present to the floor. Um, I just wanted to thank you guys for, uh, for being here this whole time. I appreciate every one of you. You know, winters and I go way back. It's a reason why I even, this is why I even made to the, to the City Hall for a interview for the DOJ, so I literally wouldn't be standing here if it wasn't for him. Um, and everyone, I can go around the table and thank you guys all for being here. Um, I look forward to, you know, hopefully serving you guys more. But, um, no, I don't have anything to say other than thank you guys, thank you everyone for, for this great, uh, term.
That's my mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Woo, Superman reeks!
So, any questions?
Oh, Captain my Captain.
Thank you. Any questions for me, or?
Uh, yes, if you win reelection, will there be a pizza party thrown in celebration?
Uh, yes, there will be a pizza party, uh, in celebration.
Can we get Shakey's Pizza?
I don't know. I don't know if I can pull that one off, but if it's available, yes.
Chase, I got something to say if you don't mind.
Yeah.
So, I, I was on, my name's Connor. I was in the city council previously. I stepped down.
Oh, yeah, I remember you.
Some issues. Um, I was also gonna say, you have done an amazing job in your term as mayor. You have worked, sorry, you've worked your ass off to do everything you've done. Even though I may not agree with you on everything, you know, but I, I see the hard work you've done and all the things you've done with his council and all the members of his council and everything they've done. And, uh, I wholeheartedly support you and reelection and, uh, look forward to see all the great things you do for the city.
I appreciate that. Appreciate that.
We love you, Connor.
Yeah, thank you. I did enjoy, uh, serving with you as well, so thank you for your service. All right, um, I appreciate that again. Any other questions? No, am I relieved?
Uh, yes, you may go back to your seat.
All right, thank you.
Oh, wait, sir, sir?
Yes.
I have one question.
Not sure.
Oh, Lord.
What is your favorite animal and why?
My favorite animal and why? Um, I would have to say a wolf.
Why?
Um, well, they're really intelligent. Really intelligent beings. They, they hunt in packs. There, there's a hierarchy in it, so, um, and if one, the pack fails and if they, if one succeeds, the pack succeeds, so. Uh, I think a wolf.
Would you call yourself a wolf potentially on a wall that is named after a street?
Wolf. Uh, I don't know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't fancy myself in the financial institutions, but, uh, given the opportunity and the stock market as it may be, then yeah, I might be a wolf of Wall Street.
All right, thank you. Go for the questions.
All right, thank you.
All right. This, uh, this time, actually, now that we have a mayoral candidate in the audience, I would like to give them the floor to present their, so, so the council, to the, to the people and state what they're gonna do for the city if they wanna take this opportunity to, uh, address the people. All right, set your name on the other floor.
My name is Osman McHale. Uh, I've already been talking with the people. They're very aware of what I'm gonna do. I've been hitting the streets, so I appreciate the opportunity to come up here and use this as a platform for my candidacy, but I've already been campaigning. These people have heard me and they've heard me loud and clear.
Okay.
If you don't need the microphone, you can always say no.
Yeah. Wow.
Oh, wait, did the council wanna ask him any questions or anything like that?
I think he made it really clear.
Yeah, he doesn't seem to like he wants to answer.
I'm not very clear what platform he's running on, though.
Yeah.
No, he made it really clear, dude.
That he wants to talk to.
He hasn't talked to me.
Yeah, he hasn't talked to.
All right, man, you have the floor?
Hi, everyone, um, sorry, um, excuse my voice, I had a bit of an accident recently. Um, I'm, I'm okay, so. Yeah, it's fine. Um, so, as an ex-therapist, um, I've been honing my ability to empathize with people for a long time. Um, I know how to listen, I know how to understand the needs of individuals and I know how to understand the needs of groups. Um, from every walk of life, not just one, from every walk of life. And I think this experience has given me a really deep appreciation for our entire city and its community. Um, and has shown me what we truly need. And my main focus is gonna be on communication and being open and trying to make changes to benefit everyone. Um, and mainly make people feel heard and appreciated for the time that they put in and for the hours they spend trying to benefit this community. Have any questions?
Uh, no, just that you're, that you're okay. I'm glad you're all right from your.
Uh, I have a question?
Yes, Boblin?
How many ribs do you have?
Not as many as a normal human should.
And you're still able to come up here and give an empowering speech like that?
Bravo.
Powerful!
Good job. Thank you so much, Jamie.
You're amazing, Jamie.
Thanks.
Well, I'm popping like a sloth anyways.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jamie.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
And definitely good luck in the election.
Thanks.
Good luck. All right, so given that, uh, going to open up the, the floor for any questions concerning any citizens and then we'll, uh, uh, have the council come up next.
What the fuck did I get myself into here?
Literally.
All right, sir?
Hello, my name's Robert Daynob, and I'm the deputy mayor.
Hi, Robert.
And I'm gonna be, uh, request, uh, I don't mean any disrespect to the council, but, uh, is it okay if I turn my back to you guys and speak to the audience?
Yeah.
Sure.
I did that earlier.
I've already forgot what you look like anyways.
You're lying.
Ashley Williams?
I don't know who, uh, who's been around as long as I have. I'm sure there's quite a few of you out there. Um, but in case you don't remember, um, I was around when Chase walked in the doors. I had been here about a month. And so if anybody's been around as long as that, you know what the city used to be like. You know what City Hall used to be like. In a couple months, Chase went from being a paralegal to the mayor of the city. And in those two months, look at what's happened. We got an incredible council here. We get a crowded room every Saturday here. Things get done like the red light legislation. Uh, things that the, the people don't even know about that go, go on behind the scenes here, where Chase has been busting his ass working with the federal government, who we all know how they work, getting shit done. And while Ms. Nomates seems like she would be a great mayor someday, and Osman I don't really have a problem with, uh, I asked both of you and everyone in the audience, who's gonna do a better job? Who's right now talking, getting done what's getting done? What is another mayor gonna be able to do?
Son of a bitch!
Everyone, let's stay until we figure out what's wrong. Oh, my god, Violet, Violet.
Get away from the windows.
Get away from the windows.
Uh, was that a terrorist attack or?
What the fuck? What's that?
It's all the cars going off.
Oh, fuck.
I'm really glad I brought my fracas today instead of my bike.
I didn't do anything, I'm just, didn't know.
Dude, what? What the fuck?
How did I become, since Oswald is a bitch, to Oswald is a dangerous man? What happened? Where did that come from?
I have no idea.
I wanna get out of here.
Yeah, it's not stuff.
Yeah, I'm saying I'm too nosy, you know?
Should probably get out.
Oh, no, it's because I'm starving.
Do you, do you have any, do you have any liquids on you that I can trace?
I'm gonna go in the water. I can, I.
All right, I'm gonna close down the meeting officially.
This is where a news chopper would be really helpful.
Is there anybody inside?
Yes, there are people inside.
No, I mean, any security guards inside?
All right, is everyone okay?
Sorry about that early har- harpy. I was having a huge headache and the only way to get out of it was to smack and doodle you, I didn't want to. Sorry about that early har- harpy. I was having a huge headache and the only way to get out of it was to smack and doodle you and I didn't want to. It was just, it's your beautiful hair's hair envy. It's what it was. I'm sorry. I didn't have a choice. Uh, it's major faux pas. Sorry, I gotta see what's going on.
Uh, I will be right back.
Yeah, I got a big dude. Yeah, he's got a big dude.
Oh jeez. Everybody inside. Get everybody inside.
Okay, we were told to leave the building, so we need to get our.
Just had to get everybody.
Okay.
Uh, let me just round people up, get them back inside? I think the meeting, I think the meeting's over at this point. Shut the bitch. You think it was intentional? I guess we'll never know. I don't think so. I think it was just a clusterfuck. I think that's what it was.
Six, three plus one.
We, we just. Believe it or not, I'm not sure what happens. Like get him pounded or whatnot? Oh shit. Why is too much of a, that's why I didn't park on this side. I had a funny feeling, oh, it's, it's being crowded. Oh jeez. At least you work at PDM. Chase should need another one. All right Oliver, yeah, it looks like it was just random. Looks like it was random and shit. So, one cop fire, another wind, another wind. You didn't, did you actually see it? See it? Or it's just you, out here and heard it first? Oh, son of a. Just random? Yeah? No, good. At least we don't have to blame anybody. Your point fingers, oh shit. Yeah, cops are gonna clean up. All right, I think meeting's over. Now we see what's going on. Hey, I hope not. That tends to scare people.